Welcome to the September 10, 2024 Meeting of Grafton School Committee. I hereby call the meeting to order and open the floor to public comment. Does anybody have public comment at this time? Seeing none, we will move on to general business. Our first order of business is an operations update from Frank Roth. Welcome on up Frank.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Thanks for letting me talk a little bit about operations. I'm going to get right into it. The operations department actually oversees several departments in the district. Custodial, maintenance, nursing, transportation, facilities, rental, food services, capital projects, and extended day, and I plan to just touch a little bit on each one. This is a similar presentation that I gave last year, a little bit different order, and I wanted to sort of update where we are in the last year, especially with the summer, what work we did over the summer. So for nursing, one of the things we try to focus on is timely communication to staff in the school communities. Parents should be getting or already have received state guidance on Triple E as an example. By the way, the green is what I'm going to just sort of talk about and highlight. I thought maybe at the end, if you had any questions, I can always go back. There's a lot in these slides. I wanted to make sure you had it in writing, but I only plan on talking about one or two things per slide. Sorry. Food services, I know Jay, James is very big on the environment, and he's worked really hard to get our kitchens composting, so the kitchens are going to all be composting by the end of next week, and then hopefully GHS and GMS cafeterias by the end of October. That's sort of our plan. Transportation, tried really hard to update the, our website, give clear information. I will tell you that the last three weeks of my world, it's me and Shawna Carlson, she's the assistant director, and it's, I want to say, a good 80% of my day has been consumed with transportation issues and questions. And overwhelmingly, a lot of families, they're just really seeking bus stops at their door. And I literally measure it out on Google, I go out to the site, make sure that it's a safe stop, and I reply back, sometimes it's 220 feet they have to walk to their neighbor's driveway, and they, they really want things at their door. For different reasons, they're worried about the snow. Like, I'm empathetic, but there's, it's just not sustainable to stop at everybody's door. And of course, as the children get older, high school age, middle school age, we expect them to walk a little bit, a little bit bigger distances. There's only once, there's one stop, it's a big neighborhood that the bus just can't go in the neighborhood, can't navigate the neighborhood, so that, if I remove that one stop, no one's walking more than .3 miles, .2 miles to get to their stop. Most of the time, it's .1 mile or less than that. Extended day, one new thing we did, I work with our extended day provider, Kidsborough. They're very nice and want to meet our needs, but they were really struggling to support different staffs at North and South Grafton, because the numbers were very low, so we worked out a plan where they, with AA Transportation, a different vendor for transportation, that those children get on the bus and they go to Milbury Street. South Grafton students go to Milbury, North Grafton students go to North Street, and then the parents pick them up there. That was a lot of coordination with the principals and the secretaries of those schools. And then facility rentals, a lot of time and effort. So we're renting constantly, the, our athletic fields, our gymnasiums, the auditoriums, and that's just a tremendous amount of work. Shawna Carlson does most of that, and then we meet with the athletic director and synchronize schedules on a weekly basis, because when people are paying, or their, their town groups not paying maybe, but just paying for custodians, they have certain expectations, we want to make sure we're meeting those expectations. But it's, it's way more work than I ever anticipated. Custodial services, we have a lead custodian in every building, and then depending on the square feet in the building, we have different custodians that come in on second shift that are responsible to clean the building. And I thought I would sort of, I just visited the Prue last weekend, the new, they don't call it top of the hub anymore, they redid it, it's beautiful up there, and I just thought I would sort of compare. Every year, we pull everything out of every space.
Very similar.
We pull everything out of every space and we clean it, clean the space, strip the floor, wax the floor, if it's carpet, we shampoo the carpet, and it works out to a little over half a million square feet, and that's about half the size of the Prue.
The whole Prue?
The whole Prue, yeah. I was shocked myself. Maintenance, we're really trying to be responsive. We have a ticketing system, I think I introduced it and spoke to the committee last year about that. That seems to be working, we're trying to redirect people back to that ticketing system. We also do bi-monthly, every other month, we walk the building with the lead custodian and the principal to make sure we're, we're meeting their needs, and if there's any issues that we can maybe problem solve together. But we do maintain quite a bit of, quite a few buildings, a lot of square footage, like I mentioned, as well as the athletic fields, and we also have the maintenance shed and the garage. The maintenance shed and the garage were really in disrepair, and I think they're both on their way to being organized so that we can use them efficiently, safe. We've made sure we've secured propane tanks and whatnot, like we're supposed to, it's not propane, it's, it's what you weld with, I always forget the name of that gas. Those are secured properly in our maintenance garage, and things are stored correctly so that we can access them when we need them. The athletic fields, a lot of challenges with our athletic fields, the turf fields are well over their, their expiration. It's about 10 years out of a turf field, and every year, we pay quite a bit of money for a company to come in and glue and try to re-seam things together, but it's, if, if you have anyone that's played on those fields, it's really, it's, it's a big struggle. So I know that we've already started the conversation in the, in the building here. Also, the lights, we did a lot of work on the lights at, at the stadium turf field, and those are in very, they're just in disrepair, and they need to be replaced as well. They're, the wiring is, I don't think it was really installed correctly, it was, it was, what do you call it, like, out in the weather and it's cracked. So we've tried to tape those up, we hired a company to come and work with us there, and I think it's, it's good for a year or two, but we really need to switch those over. So these are the different spaces that we're asked to maintain. The game program, of course, is the bread guy. That's a pretty new space, and that's, that's going well, and things are going fine. The maintenance garage is in the center of town. A lot of feedback we received that people in the town thought it didn't look nice, we've trimmed a lot of the foliage around the building and continue to do so. We're going to be painting parking spaces in the next week or two. A big one was the garage doors, we replaced all three garage doors. And got our bids and found a local gentleman that was, came in very low, and I think they looked pretty sharp. North Grafton, if it was capital that paid for it, I just thought you might want to know that, so I just highlighted it with capital. So we were supposed to pave the playground with capital, but Shawna, when she was negotiating with the pavement company, there was going to be money left over, and she asked if they would just, you know, what we had allotted, if, if they would also pave the circle, the bus circle, because we were losing a kid a week in a pothole there, but that's all been repaved, and it's, it's looking much better, and it's much safer. We're in the process of painting some hopscotch and four-square in the back for the principal there. And then all the shades in that school were replaced, the whole school. Again, went out, got three bids, and we went, I ended up going through lows, it was kind of a lot more steps, but it was a lot cheaper, and the teachers love the shades, they're, you know, like your kitchen drawers kind of pull in slowly, the shades do that as well. So very happy with those. South Grafton probably had the least amount of work done over the summer, but we did replace the, their whole front door system in the, in the spring. We had really struggled with those doors and securing them, and we really had a hard time getting vendors, and we, we found a vendor that was excellent, and that company came in and replaced all the front doors. And I got to paint them this summer, so that was cool. North Street, which of course is overshadowed by the roof, which I'll talk about in my last slide, but up until the roof failure, we were feeling pretty excited, because we focused on the front foyer of North Street, we thought it could use a little love, and, and we really spent a lot of time and energy there. It was capital money for it, but it didn't cost us that much, we, we actually didn't spend all the money allotted for that. We removed lockers, and we just repainted that, that old 1980's maroon trim, if you've been to North Street, and it looks a lot better. We painted the vestibules, those tight vestibules, changed the flooring, and put in cove molding to break it up a little, and it just feels better. The lights are LEDs now, too, so it just gives it, it's a brighter light, all for not that much money. And we continue to have some ideas to make the front foyer a little bit better. We also weeded those beds, those beds were in dire need of some love. And then on the playground, the playground, sort of the mulch had sort of eroded down the hill, it's kind of built into a hill, and we pulled all that mulch back and, and defined three areas with some borders, and it just looks a lot better. Teachers report that it's, it's a lot more easy to manage, because all the rocks and stones, not rocks, but stones, big stones, had, we pulled the ones that we could out, there's two big ones left that we'll probably work on next summer, getting pulled out of We used ARPA money at Milbury Street. The way voting was set up at Milbury Street is if you were in need of access into the building, like with a wheelchair or, or some type of walker, a stroller, you, you had to go around the back and like knock on the door and ring the bell and wait for somebody to open the door. I thought that was not great, so we, there was just these two little sections of concrete to connect the sidewalks to the back doors of the gym, which they did, and now if you are, if you need a handicap access, you can just go in through those doors. And then the middle school, we, we did quite a bit at the middle school, but a big one that I think people responded quite positively to was the courtyard had been overgrown and not really, shown a lot of love for a little bit of time, so we trimmed everything back, we weeded it, cut the beds in and mulched. That New England mulch can hide a lot of, always looks good when you put it down. Finally, Grafton High School, I already mentioned the stadium lights. In the football scoreboard, phew, so we, it was a long time to troubleshoot, but what we determined was that underneath the field is a pipe that had collapsed, and as a result, the scoreboard was no longer getting power. So we dead-ended that power source. We were thinking of coming around the track and boring a hole, like, under the track, I mean, it was going to be crazy. But then we had a bank pay for us to put in the softball scoreboard with solar panels, so I called the company that we were working with there and asked them if they could modify our scoreboard with solar panels. The answer was yes. That was all set up to be ready to go for the season to start, and unfortunately, they had, in their company, someone pass away, so they couldn't install it. So we picked up the, the solar panel and the control board, and we'll be installing it later this week. Right now, we're running it off a generator. So before the game, somebody's going to go out there and pull, like, old school, pull a generator, and it's, it's working for the games, but there'll be power out there through the sun shortly, is the hope. And then my last slide is these big issues that we all have concerns about. So the North Street roof failure, I, I'm not going to go into grave detail, but that was an unexpected, I, I don't think anyone expected it to fail, we knew that we had some issues with it. So the town manager and I have agreed that all the roofs in the town, he's going to do all the town, are going to be evaluated with a plan of action to repair or replace long-term for the whole town, which I think is a great idea. Three schools need PA systems. We've struggled to get vendors to come in and give us quotes for PAs, PA replacements. Many of our PA systems are from the 70's and maybe early 80's. The bids that we did get came in very, very high, and we'll probably only be able to do just one for the three schools that we allotted money to get the PA systems done. There's a grease trap issue that's been on for two years, I believe, on the capital budget, and the money, again, put aside for that, isn't going to cover the cost to replace it, and the tragedy there is we don't really cook in that kitchen anymore. Like, the food is shipped in, we heat it up, and then we serve it. But because it's a functional kitchen, we need a grease trap, so I'm working with the Board of Health, the gentleman downstairs with our Board of Health, has been very kind, and he's going to, we're going to try to come up with a different plan. Train HVAC, we met with them today. It's really unfortunate that the air conditioning isn't on yet at the middle school. We met with them today, and the building inspector, and the town manager, and Dr. Cummings and I, and the principal at the middle school, and I believe we have a, a plan in place to get this done by the end of the fall, so that in the spring, air conditioning will be functional. If we're really lucky, we might be able to turn it on a little bit at the end of the season. The turf fields, I already mentioned, they're just in desperate need of replacement, as well as the stadium lights. And then our vehicles, we, we, it's in the slide previously, the number of vehicles that the, the maintenance department sort of manages, and there's really been no maintenance plan that I can find in any records or anything, and many of them are in disrepair. So instead of spending huge amounts of money on vehicles that might, we might not get very much more mileage out of, no pun intended there, we want to evaluate that. So we're, we have a plan to send, we can't send them all out at once, we're going to send them out one at a time and try to see what it would take to get them more roadworthy, if you will. So, that's it, I think.
Thank you. Any questions?
What questions?
Amy?
Go ahead.
Thank you. Thank you, Frank. It's a shame you don't have a lot to do, but great job on everything.
Thanks.
It's amazing all that you've accomplished and kind of uncovered, and I'm really glad to hear that there's some plans moving forward, or we're going to create some plans. So thank you for all your work on that and your team, amazing. I have one kind of, it's a bigger question, I think. So going back to the slides on the playground and the mulch.
Which, which mulch?
Well, I was more concerned about the mulch at the elementary schools, I guess.
North Street?
North Street.
Mm-hmm.
And I thought at NGES, too, I might have seen that, but maybe I was.
Yep, we mulched, so last summer, we did Milbury Street in South.
Yeah.
So it's every other year, we're going to put fresh mulch.
Sure.
Playground mulch.
So my understanding is that mulch isn't great for accessibility, and I know that we're working on a bigger accessibility issue. So is it all, like, where is the mulch? Is it everywhere? And I should go look myself, but I thought, I think maybe we should just, while we're planning, try to figure out a different bottom, or to talk, to figure out a little bit to make sure it's accessible, because I'm.
So there's, there's, there's a, there's a modification for that.
Of course.
We were trying it at Milbury Street.
Okay.
We had these rubber mats.
Yeah.
That, think of like a weight room.
Mm-hmm.
It's about, not quite the size of the table, about this big. We had this big stack of them. The ones that you can buy to make your playgrounds a little bit, your mulch playgrounds a little bit more accessible.
Yeah.
Are porous, like the one, like the mats that you would see in a, in a dishwasher in a kitchen.
Right.
Stands on, right?
Yeah.
With the holes. These aren't porous, they're solid, and we put them at Milbury Street.
Okay.
And Ms., Joanne is, is very pleased with the results so far. We're happy to like look at a plan to put those in more schools. The, the, I always point to Mandy, because she was the principal there, but North Street is really hard to make accessible.
Oh, I know. Yeah, there's the hill, I know.
Yeah, with Steve.
I know it well.
I think we have an idea of how we could do it.
Yeah.
But it's going to take a lot of effort and money, which I'm happy to like look into. It's, it's basically a path from the far side of the school.
Yep.
That kind of cuts across. I'm more of a, like, switchback, but that's just not going to work. It's too steep.
Right. I'm aware of that. Yeah, I think it's something that we just, we need to keep an eye on and, and see how we can make it accessible for everybody to.
I'm sorry to interrupt you.
No, you're fine.
North Grafton had stone.
Right.
Right. So we looked at mulch as a big upgrade there. And, and it was a lot of, like, we put, we put it out for bids, and the bids coming back to dig all that stone out was astronomical, so we did it ourselves.
I was just going to say, you had to go out there all summer.
Yeah.
Well, I appreciate all of that, and especially the painting and everything, and I did want to say, you know, I do think the garage doors look fantastic.
Oh, thank you.
You know, and the plants, I love the flowers.
We put mums, we just put mums there.
I can't wait to see them. Thank you, Frank.
They're not in bloom yet.
Will be great. Thank you.
Sure, thank you.
Speaking of the mulch, didn't a milk truck get stuck in the mulch? That's what I was told.
Did.
It was a fascinating story, from my understanding.
It took over the whole, so our maintenance worker had his trailer, and literally, he's only going to be there for 30 minutes while he cut the back with the lawnmower, and I guess the milk man, milk person, I should say, was in a hurry and got stuck in the mulch, yeah.
Yeah.
And the more, he spun the tires, the more he sunk in. That mulch at Milbury, believe it or not, is very deep in that one section, it, it, because it puddles, and they've, we've, over the years, I think they've tried different techniques to try to get the puddle to not puddle there.
Yeah, because I've heard it puddles quite a bit.
Yeah, so, but we got him out, he got out with a tow truck.
Exciting.
They asked us if we were going to file a claim, and we didn't file a claim, we just braked the mulch back, everything's fine.
It was a very exciting day.
Yeah. Do you have something?
Thank you, Frank. This is great. You have continued to just kill it, getting everything sort of tightened up. I just wanted to ask a little bit about the vehicles. Do we need all of, like, do we need all the vehicles we currently have? Can we consolidate? How are they being used, or how could they be being used? And I know the van.
Yeah.
But some of the other vehicles, how are we using them, and?
So we, we have two, I, I think I listed them on one of the slides. We, we have two, like, Sprinter vans that are used for the game program.
Right.
Almost solely. It would be really nice, we have some after-school sporting, sport events and other events that are, it would be nice if I could get this, the little mini bus that's parked in the back here.
Yeah.
On the road, but that is presently a 7D vehicle, which means school bus, and we're not going to use it as a school bus, a school, by definition, a seven, you need a 7D registration, I'm going to bore you to tears. If, I, and this is stuff that I've learned in the last year, right? If you're using this, the bus the same way every day, and that wouldn't be that, that would be like, the bowling team has to go to Springfield, okay, pile in this.
Add it.
Um, but I have to undo the 7D license, it's really hard to get a 7D registration, switching it over is equally challenging, because it just is, and I would have to do that to get that going. And it, it's nice when our maintenance guys, we have four, each have their own vehicle. Sometimes they have to double up, but when they have their own vehicle, our work is much more efficient.
Sure.
So that's four trucks, and, and then plowing, we really rely on the four. The, the only vehicles, you know, we have these two SUVs that the town gave up that we're trying to fix up, they gave them up because they were old, and we're, we're trying to get them roadworthy to, to do some more work with, with kids. One of them's really good, it's, it's in good shape, but the other one's an old police car SUV, so it's all hard plastic inside, and it's not very kid-friendly looking.
Yep.
So we're debating what to do with that one. That's the only one I would jettison.
There's more plywood.
Yeah, more plywood.
Literal plywood than plastic.
Oh, okay.
Like.
So, yeah, not kid-friendly at all.
Frank's being, oh, no, not human-friendly. No. Wow, no.
It's like Darth Vader, it's more machine than person at this point, so.
Okay.
But, yeah, I, I mean, I, the, the former person that sort of had my role, used to drive a vehicle, I, I don't drive, I drive my own vehicle, it's not a big deal.
Yeah, okay. I'm just trying to think about, you know.
We need to give that real thought. I think Frank answered it beautifully, but probably a little on the kind side.
Yeah, it sounds like it.
I mean, those old police car, I drove one just to experience it, like, we would never put kids in there.
Put anybody in it, no.
Ever, ever. The vehicle in the back is the old poppy van.
Yeah.
Wonderful donation, but that was like when I started.
Yeah.
Like, that going to Springfield is a stretch.
Okay, so lots of work to do on those vehicles. Okay. Thank you.
Agreed.
Thanks for all of this, this is really comprehensive.
Frank, did you feel that there's more, I guess, complaints or requests for bus stops this year than in years past?
Well, it's only my second year. So I would say, last year was a lot, and this year, it just seems like it's a little bit more. I'm really surprised at the number of older children, parents that are concerned about the bus stop, and it's not that far from their house, and, and they all have valid points. I think the new thing now is people really want to see their child from their home at the stop, and, and we can't support, we just can't support that. Like, if there's a tree, like, we can't move the, you know, when we do stops, it's distance, and if there's three houses in a row, we're going to try to put it at the middle house if we can. Sometimes that kid moves, and a kid moves in over here, so it might be, we can't change it midstream, that doesn't feel right, you know? There's, there's, there's issues with that. But, but I try to be super polite and kind, like, I understand, everyone's just advocating for their child, like, it's understandable, but it's just not sustainable.
I hope that now that we're two weeks in.
It's died down a little bit, but I'm still getting them.
Okay.
I'm trying my best.
You're doing great.
Well, I mean, you know, there is a lot of, a lot of information on the news and on social media about, you know, people driving too fast and taking curves too quickly, and I think a lot of people feel a heightened sense of concern, but I think the reality is that it's just as bad as it's ever been, it hasn't suddenly gotten worse. However, I mean, I'm not going to tell parents not to be concerned with their kids, obviously, it's, but, you know.
Officer Alves has been really supportive. If I call him and, and tell him that someone's reported that people are speeding on, by the, by the kids at the bus stop, he'll send a cruiser out.
Okay. Well, that's good to hear. And I know, was it Friday, we had the motorcycles following the buses?
Right. Any reports on that? Any?
Have they said anything?
No, I haven't. I wanted to thank Chief Minardi and Officer O'Brien, they're the ones who took the lead. It was seven police officers, Officer O'Brien from GPD, but everybody else was from surrounding districts, and they all shadowed a bus for all, all four runs, which was great. Officer O'Brien, I saw him in the morning, he told me they were going to do it that day, and said that he would let me know with a report on how it went. He hasn't yet.
That's something they're doing at all districts, correct? Because I saw that North Bridge.
All the participating ones.
Yeah.
I saw some with, without, not with the motorcycles, but with the cars, so.
It's, it's nice to see a heightened awareness and attention paid, because, yeah, the buses all of a sudden are on the roads, and people don't, kids in the school don't know when school starts.
Yes.
You know, it's a valid thing, but.
Yeah.
Safety first, and hopefully, hopefully Graftonites were well behaved on Friday and didn't try to go around the buses.
I will check with Officer O'Brien.
Hopefully. I had one question, Frank, it was about the boys' bathroom in the middle school. Is, so that's the one that was, it's right near the gym, correct?
Correct.
Is that going to be open soon? Because as of right now, it's still closed.
It's, it, it should be open, so the, the dividers for that bathroom were purchased when they did the, the girls' bathroom.
Mm-hmm.
And then they, I don't know why, they were stored, I saw how they were stored, they were stored nicely, but they all warped.
Oh.
It's not the contractor's, like, he's working with us to try to solve it, but they all warped, so nothing is plumber level when it comes to the dividers. So we're trying to figure out a solution. We don't want to open it up and have it look like.
Yeah.
The house that Jack built, you know? We want it to look correct and function correctly. So give us another week or two. I think, I think we have a solution.
Oh, good. Well, that's good to hear.
Hopefully before the election.
Well, I mean, that was in the back of my mind, but I was actually more concerned with kids in gym class who needed to get to a bathroom.
Mm-hmm.
I just want to thank you again for your can-do attitude and all the hard work you put in. Thank you so much.
Thanks.
And we'll see you, I think we're going to see you again in a few weeks.
Awesome.
To talk money.
Oh, great.
Aren't you excited?
That's even more exciting.
All right.
Thank you so much.
Just to pop a color, though, next.
Okay.
And I really appreciate the sports coat.
Okay. Thanks. Noted, you helped.
If we just wanted the tabs.
It's true, yep.
All right, next we have contracts. Mandy is gonna give us an overview. Just to remind the committee and the public, these are contracts three and four of five.
Yes, that's correct. Good evening. So, you have copies in your agenda this evening of the MOA for the support staff, as well as the fully-integrated contract for the nurses. Just like I did with the teachers and the custodians, I prepared just some slides as an overview of the changes that we are seeing with these two contracts. I want to start by thanking the negotiations team, both on the school committee side, but also on the union side as well. I think we had some really productive conversations that resulted in two more fantastic contracts that I can present to you this evening. So, we'll start with the support staff, which is primarily made up of our paraprofessionals. We also have attendance clerks and media clerks, who are members of this union. One change in language that we made is, in addition, just clarifying, this has been the expectation for a long time, just clarifying it in terms of language, that they are expected to be at their workstations fifteen minutes before and after the student day. We changed a little bit of how the sick time is also going to work. Previously, they were receiving one and a quarter sick days per month, and that was being front-loaded in their accounts at twelve and a half sick days per year. We've moved to, much like we did with the custodians, one and a half sick days accrued per month. And we also put in some language about vacation and long weekends. If you're going to take a sick day along or around those times, we have the right to, you know, we reserve the right to ask for a note if we feel like absenteeism is, is a concern. The wage schedule was one of the major changes that we made with this unit. You'll recall with the teachers, we did kind of a cleaning up and a reorganization of their salary schedule. We, we did the same thing with the paras. We went into the support staff negotiations feeling like, of all four of our units, they were the ones who were underpaid. They're really hard-working people in our district, and we could not be even remotely as successful as we are without them. And so, we worked really hard to come up with a way that we could compensate them fairly. And so, we had previously a nine-step wage schedule that ranged from, believe it or not, seventeen dollars and forty-nine cents up to twenty-three thirty-two. And we've moved to a five-step wage schedule that ranges from twenty-one dollars and twenty-six cents to twenty-five dollars and thirty-one cents. It's a significant increase. It does work with our budget and our numbers, and we are moving forward with a three percent, three and a half percent, and three percent cost-of-living increase for them for the next three years. Another area of major changes was the stipends, something that the union was really advocating for, was just some additional areas in which people could be eligible for those end-of-year stipends. So, historically, we give stipends to folks who have our safety care training, which is our de-escalation and physical management, folks who are doing our discreet trials, and any registered behavior technicians. And the language that you see in the MOA in front of you is really, it, it includes a lot more options. Paraprofessionals who are supporting in our intensive classrooms, who are supporting our medically fragile students, our small-group therapeutic settings, all of that sort of thing. We also included CPR and first aid. We also included toileting. So, anything that is outlined in the student's IEP is what designate who gets the stipend. If you are working with a student who requires a CPR certification or a first-aid certification, you will then be eligible for that end-of-year stipend. Same thing for all the other things. Previously, we have offered paraprofessionals forty dollars in addition to their daily wages if they are subbing for us in a classroom for two and a half or more hours. We did tweak that a little bit. We brought it down from two and a half to two hours. So, if we do ask them to cover a classroom anywhere between two and four hours, we're gonna give them that forty dollars in addition to their daily wages. And then, anything for more than four hours, we're going to give them sixty dollars. It's, it's in addition to their wages. It's just a way of recognizing them for going above and beyond. We obviously try not to pull paras to sub as best as we can. We have paraprofessionals because students' IEPs require them, but unfortunately, sometimes that does happen. So, that's just something that we changed in this contract. We did increase the longevity by a hundred dollars each tier, so at ten, fifteen, and twenty years of service. And then, just some miscellaneous items, we are, much like we did across the whole district, going to require direct deposit, and we are going to provide them with a copy of a staff handbook. That was something that came up as well.
Any questions about the support staff? Any questions on the contract? Yes?
A quick, a quick question, which is just clarification. So, when it says all stipend payment is outlined in the student IP, that means like if the support staff is CPR, first-aid certified, but they are not working with a student who requires that, they don't get that stipend. Is that correct?
Correct. That's exactly correct. And the vast majority of them, with the exception of RBT, are things that we can provide in district. So, if we pair a paraprofessional with a student who does require safety care or CPR, and they don't have that certification, we would provide that training in district as well. Thank you.
Any other questions? Would anybody like to make a motion?
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the memorandum of agreement between the Grafton School Committee and SEIU Local 888 School Year Support Staff Employees for twenty twenty-four through twenty twenty-seven.
Second thought?
Motion made and seconded. Any, any further discussion? I just want to, oh, I was gonna say, but go ahead.
I probably want to say what you're gonna say. I just wanted to thank you and Kristy and Liz Finney and our, the other, the paras from the, and the members from the Paraside as well for all your work on this. It's great to see how this has progressed since the last contract, so thanks for all the hard work on that.
I, I wanted to say a similar thing. Thank you to the, to the paras on the bargaining team, to our, our school district council, Mandy, put an awful lot of work into this one, and, and Kristy, who came in and hit the ground running right away with her sharp math skills. I'm very pleased with this contract. I hope, I hope the support staff is pleased with it. It's, it's a far less embarrassing starting number, for sure, for me personally. I just want to say again how much I appreciate our, our support staff and all that they do. We definitely could not run this district without all of them. So, onward and upward. Seeing no further discussion, we'll move to a vote. All those in favor? All those opposed, abstentions. Motion carries. Contract is approved. And I assume we'll sign that at the end of the night?
That's correct.
Okay. Next.
All right, so we're gonna move over to nurses. You do have the fully-integrated contract, so it's a little bit more difficult to kind of tease out the changes. If you're familiar with our contracts, which I hope you are, you'll notice that the nurses mirror the teachers' contract very, very closely. So, I will highlight those changes. So, a lot of these are going to sound very familiar. We went from one eighty-two to one eighty-three days. I'm sorry, there's a typo, I should say, nurse work year up there. Historically, our nurses have had up to thirty hours of prep time prior to the school year starting to get things ready, to work with students who are in need of physicals, and go through all of their required documentation. The change in the language to that is continuing with up to that thirty hours, and then, if there is a case in which they would need any more hours beyond the thirty, we would just allow that as long as they have prior approval, and it would be just a case-by-case basis. The salary schedule is the same exact thing as the teachers. We're going from that twenty-four-step salary with the paused steps down to the fourteen-step schedule without the paused steps. They also are going to have a super step for themselves for those who are already at the top of the schedule in FY twenty-four. And then, the one other change for the nurses is that we added a lane, and it's a lane before the bachelor's lane. It's for nurses who come in with their associate's degree. So, you can be an RN in Massachusetts and not necessarily hold a bachelor's degree. You can have it with an associate's. And we have run into just kind of questions on, you can be an RN, and you can have DESI certification as a school nurse without necessarily holding that bachelor's degree, but we didn't have that lane, so it was kind of challenging to determine where those folks would fall on the, on the salary schedule. So, we added the lane. The nurse coordinator stipend is moving from five thousand to six thousand annually, and we increased the longevity. It mirrored the teachers historically, so it's going to mirror the teachers moving forward with those different tiers of longevity. And then, probably the most, most lengthy change in the contract is that we added a sick bank. They did not have a sick bank in their contract before, and that was one of the things that they advocated for, including. So, you can see the language outlined in the contract in front of you, but that was, again, it was not much changing in the, in the nurses. Any questions?
Any questions?
Yes, I don't really understand the sick bank. I'm gonna be honest with you. I don't, what happens? They have sick time, and then they give it up, and then somebody else uses it?
Yeah, exactly. So, it's, historically, when you get hired, you have the option of contributing, but now that this is a newly-established sick, sick bank, they're going to have the option of contributing a higher number of days, and that it's, that's exactly what it is. It's a bank of sick days that sits, and then if someone in the unit needs it, if they have fallen ill and they've exhausted their own sick time, they go through basically an application process. The language that came up in the negotiations was, at first, the application process would include a committee of people, and including their own colleagues, and we kind of moved away from that, because we didn't really feel like it made a lot of sense for people to be presenting their own medical documentation to colleagues of theirs. So, it's a, it's a process that goes straight through the human resources department, and then, we give out a certain amount of sick days at a time to that individual, and then, if they are in need of additional days, they can reapply for additional days as well.
Are they eligible for family medical leave or for, so this is in addition to, to like after you've used up everything type of thing?
So, family medical leave is unpaid, so the difference would be that this is.
And then, in Grafton, if you were to quit, and do you get to sell, like, your sick time?
No.
Oh.
No. Does that make sense? The teachers have it as well.
Oh, yeah, but they don't have the, I was gonna go back to the process.
Correct. Their process, the language and their process is different.
This is the first unit that has a slightly different process, where it goes through HR rather than through a committee.
Yep.
When we were talking about it, it just struck me that, you know, why should an employee have to bring in medical documentation to a committee of ex-people, and, you know, it just seemed like a, a huge burden for someone who's already sick. So, you know, HR should be able to handle that, and if, and if there's any question, the committee does exist, so they would go through the committee at that time, but I would think that would be in a, in a very unusual circumstance. So, I'm hoping that in the future, you know, if this works out well for this unit, other bargaining units may want to do this as well, because it seems a lot, a lot better in terms of privacy and, you know, medical information. Is there any, anybody else want to make a motion or ask a question?
Madam Chair?
Yeah.
I move that the, that the collective bargaining agreement between Grafton School Committee and Massachusetts Association for the Grafton Public School Nurses is accepted by the school committee. Second.
Motion made and seconded. Any further discussion? I don't know what's going on. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? All right, great. Thank you. Thank you, Mandy.
Great work, everybody.
Yeah, thank you. Thanks to that team, too. Thank you.
Job Rebecca, your first contracts, too.
That did a great job.
I think I'm up next.
We did, and we did that, we did that one without counsel, too.
That is correct.
So was.
Nice.
All right, human resources update. You're still in the hot seat, Mandy.
I'm still in the hot seat. So, since we last met, we have made a handful of new hires. I've highlighted the three in the teaching world here on the screen above you. So, we did have a, a couple of last-minute resignations that came in right at the end of the summer. Typically, those are kind of nerve-wracking when you hear that the AP calculus teacher is leaving, but we managed to fill these positions not only quickly, but with some really fantastic people. It's kind of unheard of that that happens, but, you know, I, huge kudos to our hiring teams, both at the high school in Milbury Street. We, we are bringing in three more additional amazing people. So, Marielle in Brunyak has been teaching high school for a really long time, high school math. She has great experience. She's gonna be one of the new math teachers at the high school. Meeting with her was, I can't even describe it other than saying it was just an absolute pleasure. She's wonderful. She's gonna be great for our schools. Laura Monacino is going to be joining us as the special education team chair at Milbury Street. So, that was one of those interesting positions that became available because of a series of shifts. So, we had a, a fourth-grade teacher resign, and then some shift, someone shifted into the fourth grade, someone shifted over, and so Kelly Kula, who's been our team chair at Milbury Street, is still with us. She's just in a different role, which is actually really amazing for Laura as well, because Kelly's going to continue to be a resource for her. Laura has a lot of experience in the role and the world of special education. She's gonna be really strong as well. And Jolaine Silva is joining us. She actually recently moved here from Cuba, where she taught English and Spanish, and that's where she went to school, and again, has a great deal of experience. But the fact that our students are going to have a native speaker in their Spanish classroom is, is a pretty amazing opportunity for them. So, I'm super thrilled about these, these new hires, especially the fact that they came in at the end of August, and in some cases, the beginning of September. So, so that's great. We're also fully staffed in the para world, which is not something that I think has happened in a really long time to start a school year off, but we're, we're just in a really, really great place. I also wanted to just take a moment to recognize those staff members who are celebrating ten, twenty, and thirty years of service in the Grafton schools. The folks here up on your screen are celebrating ten years of service in just various capacities and different positions throughout the district. Jay, you're gonna have to help me out with Anne Marie's last name.
Ballack.
Ballack, okay. Anne Marie Ballack. We've got Dan Berman, Trish Flynn, Kim Gilbert, Carrie Gordon, Kristen Grolow, Sarah Hannah, Lena Hodge, Jaclyn Lampkins, Nicole McDonald, Anthony Morando, Jenna Minardi, Deb Sexton, and Amanda Wren have all been here for ten years. We have five people celebrating twenty years of service. Bob Anderson, Jay Cody, Matt LaMere, Beth Parker, and Jennifer Quinn. So, if you see them around the district, make sure you give them a quick shout-out and congratulations. And some years, we don't have anyone celebrating thirty years, but we have two people celebrating thirty years of service this year. Beth Lambert, English teacher at the high school, and Steve Trombley, band teacher over at the high school as well. They have both been here for thirty years. It's quite an amazing contribution that they've made to our district, so definitely a huge shout-out to, to all of these people, but especially to Beth and to Steve.
That's awesome. I would like to add to that. I had Mrs. Lambert.
Did you really?
As a teacher, and I remember Mr. Trombley with hair, so.
That's what thirty years of working in education will do for you, I guess.
Thirty years of any, any job, really.
I have to say, and this is a quick story, Mrs. Lambert, I had her in high school, and we used to have what was called, I don't know if they still have it, cultural enrichment, in which she headed it up, and we went caroling one year. It was lovely until the bus backed into a mailbox.
Oh, no.
And then just went off. Like, we didn't even stop. We just kept going, and Mrs. Lambert remembers that fondly.
That's why we don't do that anymore.
That was a fun time with Mrs. Lambert.
All right.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I have a quick question for you, Mandy. Also, thank you. Great work. This is phenomenal. I'm so happy to see you. I'm so happy to see all these new faces and the faces that have been with us for a while as well. It's great to recognize them. This is off-topic, so if you need to get back to me, that's fine. Do we have any sort of training or, it's not professional development, because that wouldn't make any sense, but for our after-school staff, so for our coaches, for our directors, for anybody who's not a teacher in Grafton but comes in specifically to just do their specialty? What is, how is that process? And I don't know, do you hire, or is it the academic, is it the athletic director that hires our coaches?
It's definitely a little bit of both. So I'll speak to the hiring first. So very similar to the way most people are hired in the district in that the interviewing and the recommendations and things like that all come from the department. And then the logistical pieces go through my office. But in terms of who's doing the interviewing and making the decisions, for the most part, it would be coming, if we're speaking about coaches, through the athletic department.
And then when they start, like they just start, we put them out on the field or the gym or wherever they like to be, or even, or in the theater, whatever that is? Do they get any sort of like, these are our norms, these are our expectations?
It's a good question. I don't believe that there's anything formally in process. It's more of conversations with their, the person who leads their department. But there's no formal training provided through my office.
Thank you, appreciate that.
Can I hold off of that?
Of course.
Made me think, and this may be an Ashley question. Are the coaches required to be Safe Sport certified? Do we have that as a requirement or do you know?
I think they are.
I would assume so.
I wanna say they are.
She's on, I can get the answer tomorrow, but I think she's coming before the committee.
She is, like next meeting, I think.
I wanna say they are, but we can double-check on that.
I would assume they had to be, but I just, it occurred to me when you mentioned coaches, Laura.
Yeah.
And I wanna piggyback on that as well. Laura made everybody think. Do we ever have like a paraprofessionals going for, with the after-school programs to help with students or?
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, and they're, okay.
So any, any student who, like extracurriculars and things like that? Yep, if students require paraprofessional support, yes.
Okay.
Yep, they do. All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Very long, we have the superintendent's report, and I'm gonna give Megan a heads-up because we left you off the agenda by mistake. It's my fault, you'll go after Jay, okay?
All right. A lot of what I was going to cover, we've already touched on, the roof at North Street, HVAC at GMS. I was gonna, again, thank, I'll take the opportunity to, again, thank Chief Minardi and Officer O'Brien for that great program. The seniors, we're, we're just off to a great, great start across the board. The seniors have already just been fantastic, senior breakfast, first day, second day, it was awesome. Sports are in full, they are just, it, it seems like we have more kids participating than ever before, but we'll find out from Ashley soon. We've got open houses starting up tomorrow night and going off and on for the next three weeks. I wanted to touch on the budget process, this might, Amy, this might kind of bleed into future agenda stuff. But today, Kathleen Lungarini, our Director of Finance, and I met with Evan and Mary Loria from the town side, talking about the FY26 budget for the most part. We were talking about future years, obviously, we had led to an override discussion. I would like to rethink how we approach the budget this year in a typical year. So say you're coming off of a successful override, it kinda makes sense. I think the way that we do it, we start in the early fall, August, September. And then before you, we bring operations, athletics, technology, sometimes two a night, but often one. And we build and build and build, and it's done very publicly, which is great. And then by December, we present, in essence, our requested budget. We don't go, I think we're really good actually about not going crazy and having it just be purely fantasy. We usually by December have a clue as to what that number or the amount that will most likely be allotted. But anyhow, we do that in December, then we get the number, meet with finance committee, go back and forth, wait for state funding, get state funding, go to town meeting, and there we go. We know right now, we know today, that given the, the current funding status, we will be two million dollars short of a stable level service budget. Like, we just know that for a fact. So my thinking this year is to start basically just front-end everything. We can still go through the process, we should have tech before you, we should have operations, all, all that special education, et cetera, before you. But essentially, create two budgets. One that's gonna be based on roughly a three percent increase over last year and one that would be level service at whatever that number is, five point six percent or something. And simply get ahead of it and be very transparent and proactive, not get to the spring and go, oh, we're so surprised, we're short two million. Like, I am one hundred percent confident that we'll be short almost exactly two million. If the committee is open to that approach, I would suggest that at the next meeting that Kathleen and I basically present an overview, like a foundational overview of where we stand, what the past looks like, what, going to more depth on the five-year forecast, basically a state of the union as to where we stand at the beginning of the budget process. And then that's gonna lead to people coming in and presenting with reductions, without reductions. We still get to that same end in December where we're gonna put forth a budget. Anyhow, I'm going on and on, but I think it would be transparent and proactive, which I think is important. And that's all I had for my report.
Rebecca? Can I make a comment on that?
Of course.
I like the idea of sort of putting, not that we're intentionally fear-mongering, but all of us are like, if we don't get the override, if we don't get the override. And it's like, let's put some numbers to it, and it's like, these are the places we're gonna have to cut or somewhere else. And it's like, it's real.
Sure.
And I, I really, I like that idea a lot because it's not gonna be a surprise. It's more like, let's make choices now.
So what you wanna present next week, would that include the new salary information?
Yeah, oh, yeah.
That would have all the-
So we took that-
When is your, when is your contract going to be completed so that we can get that number?
Pretty soon, that's on me, the fact that it hasn't been. But I'm sure it will be soon. But yeah, we've been updating the forecast as all the different contracts come in. Police, for example, obviously, all the ones that the school committee is a part of. I think almost all of the town contracts are now in that forecast, so that's been updated, and we'll go through that.
So that's as the town as a, as a whole, is what you're speaking of, correct? Like, you're not talking about this, you don't wanna look at teacher salaries, power, like-
Look at anything you want. Is that what you want?
That's kinda what I want.
Yeah, well, over the next two weeks, I guess whatever the committee decides that they want presented, present.
Well, I think what we're talking about is a, is an overview, right? For two weeks from now, we're talking about an overview of where we stand. So that is gonna include the projections that we saw last year. The numbers will be updated with the new sal, with the new contracts that we've approved. That's, that's what we're talking about.
I understand what we're talking about.
Okay. All right. But just one, right, we're not gonna do two yet, we're just doing the overview of the situation first.
Correct, yeah, yeah.
Okay, 'cause you need more than two weeks, I get it. All right. You have anything?
It's been covered.
All right. Nothing else? All right.
No, wait, in your report, are you gonna be presenting handbooks at the next meeting?
No.
When will the handbooks be presented? Because as we saw today, like in the para contracts, for instance, they talk about handbooks in the training that was presented to the staff, it mentions handbooks in that training. Those handbooks that are online currently for the students are not correct.
Right.
So when is that going to be done?
As soon as they're updated and complete, and I feel like confident putting them before the committee.
Okay, when do you foresee that confidence?
Probably October.
October, because before you said September, so it's October, is what you're thinking?
October.
October the first, meeting in October?
Don't know yet.
Okay. So when those are done, are you going to re-present them to the students to sign off on?
No, I haven't got that far yet.
Got it? Okay. Anything else for Jay? Move on to- What, yeah, I know, I was gonna call on her next, I was just going back to my agenda. Megan, she's here representing the students tonight, and I guess I'll note that we will have a junior rep, a rep from the junior class soon. But Riley and Megan are our senior reps, Riley is busy tonight, so it's, it's the Megan Show. Welcome back.
It's great to be back and it's awesome to see everyone here. Let me just pull up my notes. So there was some new policy changes at the beginning of the school year, but those seem to be, people seem to getting used to them. There's a new homework club on Tuesdays and Wednesdays at the middle school, which high schoolers are open to volunteer at for service hours. And then yearbooks are on sale for seventy dollars until October first. And then at that time, they're gonna be bumped up to eighty dollars until January first, when they will be full-priced at ninety dollars. So get those while you can. Look out for college visits, we have the privilege of having a lot of college reps visit GHS. So there, there will be announcements on Schoology of when certain college, college visits are happening. And then on the topic of college, we, there's actually a fair at Worcester State University, and it's free. It's on Sunday, October ninth, from eleven to one, at the Worcester State DeFutis Wellness Center. And then there was also a new ambassador program that happened kicking off the first week of school, which enabled certain seniors to be easy, easily identifiable for freshman questions. So that definitely helped freshmen adjust to high school life. And then there's also a new program for teaching assistants for upperclassmen who succeeded in classes. So that seems to be going well. I'm actually one of the TAs and I like it so far, but I think that's all I have. It's for AP Statistics.
Just talking about statistics.
Great, congratulations. All right. Well, you are, as always, free to stay or free to go.
I'm actually gonna go watch the debate.
We will be too. All right, and so the next agenda item is future agenda items. I would like to call the committee's attention to a minor change. All the way at the bottom of the second page, April twenty-ninth. That meeting had previously said the twenty-second, I missed it. It was supposed to be not during break, so now it's not during break. And Rebecca and I were reading it at the same exact time unbeknownst to one another, and we both caught it. So thank you, Rebecca, and thank you for fixing that, Jay. Jay and I have moved a couple of things around, but everything is still there. The financial stuff is gonna move around as we need. Next meeting looks like athletics, superintendent goals, food service, and then the foundational budget overview. So that's where we stand, does anybody else have anything? All right. Seeing nothing, we will move on. We have no minutes to approve tonight. We don't?
We don't.
We do not.
We do not.
We do have some warrants.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
I move that the committee approve warrant W eight R two in the amount of one thousand and twenty dollars.
Second.
Motion made and seconded, any comments, questions? Seeing none, we'll move to a vote, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Madam Chair.
Yep.
I move that the committee accept warrant ten in the amount of three hundred and eighty-five thousand, one hundred and thirty-eight dollars and two cents.
Second.
Motion made and seconded, any comments, questions? Seeing none, we'll move to a vote, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Madam Chair.
Yep.
I move that the committee approve warrant nine, which is out of order with warrant ten, in the amount of seven hundred and sixty-seven thousand, ninety-nine dollars and fifty-four cents.
Second.
Motion made and seconded, any comments or questions? Seeing none, we'll move to a vote, all those in favor?
Aye.
All right, thank you, everybody. We'll move on to policy. It is eight oh five for those who are, for those who are interested in the town.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
I would like to move that we vote on the first seven policies as a group. Those are policies AC, AC dash R, ACA, ACA dash R, AC AB, AC GA, and AC GB as they are all, they all came from the July MAS C policy update. They've been updated with sort of legalese based on change, some changes to Title IX. So as a group, they all deal with nondiscrimination and process and sort of legal language. So I would like to suggest that we vote on them as a group.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Any discussion?
Yes, on policy AC AB, on page twenty-three, you guys, you're using the, the phone number for NSES is currently as the MSES phone number, that should get changed.
Wait, hold on.
I'm sorry, what page?
Page twenty-three.
Thank you.
Where's my book? Silly me.
Okay, I'm sorry, so the M?
It, there's just a wrong phone number, the phone number for the, it shows for the North Street Elementary School is the same.
Oh, it's the Millbury Street, okay.
Yeah, it's just a typo.
Yep.
But it should be correct.
Yep.
I did find one, go ahead, sorry.
And then policy AC GB on pages fifty-one through fifty-two, it doesn't list all the investigators. It just lists like a couple, and it seems like it should have one per school, so, since it has.
Can we back up, where are we?
Page fifty-one to fifty-two.
They are all here.
It's the, it goes down to direct, the directors, correct? Because first it lists-
So basically, the way it works is-
First it lists investigators and then it lists decision-makers. Usually, the investigators seem to be the co-principal or the vice-principal or assistant-principal. And then the decision-makers seem more as the principals. It just seems like we're missing a couple.
Yeah, if I recall, and I'll have to double-check on this, but I recall from the policy notes on this, this was very much the way it was said to do it.
Roseanne is all elementary, so she does, so she would-
She does all, like four.
Four, she's the investigator for elementary.
All of them, okay.
Yeah, and then she would report up, like, let's say there was an issue at North Grafton Elementary School, they would call Roseanne, and she would look into it, and then she would report up into Julie, because Julie's by herself there, so it wouldn't make much sense for somebody. So that's why it's listed that way.
Okay.
Thank you, Laura.
You're welcome.
I had one thing. Top of twenty-six, I'm still scrolling, I apologize.
I have to scroll up to get any comments, so.
Number B, letter B.
Yep.
That line there, there's something, there's something wonky happening. There's an extra space and a comma, which isn't a problem. However, on the next line, it says gender, identity, disability is one thing, and I believe that comma is supposed to be down.
Yep.
Okay. And I know this is their version, and they missed it on their-
Sometimes it's when we get from PDF to thing, but no, gender, identity is not a disability.
It was news to me if it were.
I've added the comma.
All right, cool. Anything else? I had one more thing, but I don't think it's this policy. School lunch is not included in this set, right? Okay, good.
These are all the nondiscrimination policies.
All right, anything else? Seeing none, we'll move to a vote, all those in favor of adopting these policies?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed, abstentions, awesome. All right.
Great.
My, my order is not your order, so.
I apologize.
No, you just tell me what you want next.
So the next-
I'm sorry, to go back, is that considered, we just fully accept that? That's not, that's not a first read, correct? Or is that a first read?
It's a first read.
It's a first read, okay.
It's a first read. Sorry, yes, first read.
Yes.
Yeah.
I apologize, I should have ordered the motion to say that. So the next four, and I'm gonna start with J I C K, harassment of students. But these next four fall under- But these next four fall under policies that we moved to the MASC policy when we moved over to the MASC service. Some policies remain Grafton specific. Some we just moved to the MASC version. And so these were not voted upon, and they were called to our attention. So we're gonna go through the next four. However, as part of this discussion, Madam Chair, I'd like to suggest that as a whole, we take a look as a committee at the MASC policies that we have adopted, and, you know, take the next couple of weeks until our next meeting to familiarize ourselves with them, and then plan to vote on those as a grouping. So that we're comfortable with having moved and having taken a vote to move to MASC policies.
Okay. We can, we can circle back to that after we get through the list of policies. How's that? Let's get through.
Fair enough. So, the first one we wanna look at is JICK, harassment of students. And I move that the committee consider this as a first reading.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Any discussion? Seeing none, we'll move to a vote. All those in favor? Aye? Okay. Motion carries.
Okay. Next policy, JB, equal educational opportunities. I move that we accept it as a first reading.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Any comments, questions? I had to look up protective hairstyles. I was not, I...
You were not.
I was not familiar with the term, and now I am.
Yep. Yeah, big deal.
All those in favor of adopting this policy? Aye? Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. Okay?
Policy EFD, school nutrition program charge policy. Move, we accept as a first reading.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. This is the one, I think I found some question on. So this is the bottom of page 57.
Yep.
It says, "If parents/guardians have issues with student purchases, they should contact for assistance."
No, we already updated. It just didn't transfer over. It's the contact the Grafton Public Schools Finance Officer. So it's, the PDF is an issue when we do it.
All right.
But it's there.
That's why we took care of that.
I believe you.
I'm just showing you. My ethics have been called into question regarding the policy.
All right. Any other comments, questions on this policy? Seeing none, we'll move to a vote. All those in favor? All those opposed? Abstentions? Okay. Action carries.
Policy ECAF, security cameras in schools. I move that we accept it as a first reading.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Any discussion? Seeing none, we'll move to a vote. All those in favor? Aye? Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries.
Okay, then we have a couple of second readings. CHA dash, slash CHC, development and dissemination of procedures. I move that the committee accept this as a second reading.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Aye? Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries.
Next policy CB, school superintendent. I move that the committee accept this as a second reading.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Any discussion?
Yeah, can we just get rid of the dates on this one? At the bottom of it? Just, because if we're going over to MASC, all the other ones...
Yeah. It'll be when we have voted tonight on it, though.
Yep.
It'll say, it'll be updated.
Can I just ask a question? And I don't know if I just didn't notice this last time, but it has mayor in parentheses.
I love that part. I think that's how it's written. Because most towns have a mayor.
Well, cities.
Cities have mayor. Right.
I didn't know it, I mean...
And we could take that out.
Technically, we submit the annual report to the, to the town administrator's office.
Yeah.
So maybe that's what needs to go there? I don't know.
I agree.
I don't know if that screws us up either.
I don't think that changes the spirit of the policy in any way that we need to bring this back a fourth time, I think, at this point.
I don't know why it didn't, it didn't register until now.
Thank you, good catch.
Yep. Mayor is funny.
It's my favorite part.
Well, you know, a lot of times the mayor is the chair.
Chair of the school committee.
And then the vice-chair. So like in Marlboro.
No, no, good.
The vice-chair runs.
Whatever. That's, that's cool.
All right. Is there any further discussion on that policy? Seeing none, we'll move to a vote. All those in favor? Aye? Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. Last one.
Last one. Oh, did you want me to do this one?
Sure.
You were doing great.
Thank you. No, rock on.
So this one came up. We had some discussion last time. I don't know if my edit made it through under the PDF, which is my fault. But, we went back and forth on technology in schools. We said there wasn't one at MASC. And then Amy pointed out, there is one. Well, when we further reviewed, it's, there's two separate ones. Right now, MASC does not have a comprehensive policy for personal technology in schools. What we're looking at ahead of us right now is student use of district technology in schools. So for instance, the iPads that are given, the Chromebooks that are given, or whatever else is used as, so that, MASC has a policy. We changed it to read the header, student use of district technology. I'm not sure if you're reading, if it's not there. I swear I updated it.
Okay.
I don't know what happened. But it's there. But you'll see it as a second reading next time. And then what the policy subcommittee is doing a much deeper dive into getting a comprehensive personal technology. What we're doing right now is, we had presented the Virginia one that we liked, but we're, we reached out to other districts to see what they're doing. So we're doing some deeper work on that. And we're hoping, we won't have it for your next meeting, because I'll be away, but hoping to have it soon in October on like a comprehensive personal policy. MASC, again, does not have one for ma, for personal technology. Can I say that anymore? Personal technology. So what you're, we're asking for tonight is to take a look at MAC's version of district technologies in schools. And we just edited it on top. My apologies again. Student use of district technology in schools as a first reading. So, I'm sorry, Amy. Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion to approve JICJ, student use of district technology in schools. Second. As a first reading.
Motion made and seconded. Discussion? Go ahead.
I really like the separation that we're planning to do. Because it is, I feel like, two very distinct conversations that are kind of often squished into one, which I don't think is appropriate. So thank you.
My guess is that MASC will probably have, probably by the time we figure it out.
As soon as you figure it out.
But, maybe we can, you know, we're all working together. I put a call out on the list serve, and I've gotten people have sent me theirs. And we can take a look just to see, and obviously come up with our own ideas, too. My thought on that, though, is I would like to possibly throw this over to the school councils on GMS and GHS, especially because there are students on there. I'd like to get their input, too. So it'll be a longer process, for sure. So maybe I walk back on October. Because we wanna get, we wanna do it right. Get some input.
I, I very much like this, this policy. I liked it the first time I read it. We do have an appropriate use form. We, we, we do have parents and guardians signing this form in an effort to educate them on their responsibility, on the district's role in teaching responsible use of technology. Even though the title is going to change, I would submit that this still covers personal technology use, in a, in a manner of speaking. It doesn't come out and say, "Your cellphone," or "Our district iPad." It simply says, "Students shall utilize digital resources in a responsible, efficient, ethical, and legal manner." Which means that they're following building policy. That's what that means. So I think that that's, I think that that's good. It's simple. I'll be curious to see what, what we end up with for personal. And at the risk of sounding lazy, I really, I feel like this is enough. I think this is enough for the district. The building principals will have their own, their own, I don't wanna call them policies, protocols. Basically, it's how you store your phone during the school day.
Madam Chair.
We can agree to disagree on that, and that's fine. But I, I like this a lot. Yes.
I was just gonna say, that's great. And we may come to the same conclusion, but we wanna do a little bit more research.
Yep. I don't blame you.
It's our time, so...
I totally understand. And if MASC is gonna move in that direction, then it's at least worth a look. But I'm also sensitive to the vast differences between buildings, and how quickly things can change. So, that said, thank you for looking into this. I appreciate it, and I like this a lot. Any other comments, questions, discussion? Seeing none, we'll move to a vote. All those in favor? Aye? Opposed? No? Abstentions? I didn't say no, I was just saying no. Right. Motion carries.
Can we return to my suggestion?
Yes, okay. So we're gonna go back to your suggestion. Which rather than me state it again, why don't you state it again?
Sure.
Okay.
So, we, when we moved to the MASC service, certain policies, we moved to the MASC policies specifically because of the ability to update them, like we did the seven that we did at the top of the meeting. And sort of agreed that as many as we could, we would move to the MASC version of policies, unless we needed a Grafton specific one. Because it's a new committee, that was done two years ago at this point. It's a new committee. Not everything was necessarily voted on individually. So I suggest that as a committee, we all familiarize ourselves with the policies over the next couple of weeks, if that's enough time for folks. And we come back at the next meeting and vote to approve the MASC versions that we have adopted, so that we're not doing them piecemeal like we did these four here, so that we're doing them as a whole.
So we would approve the manual that will exist on the MASC website.
Correct.
For Grafton. Everything that's already there.
Correct.
As a first reading.
Correct.
And then we would vote a second time.
That is exactly my thinking or suggestion.
Yes.
So, in saying that, you're going to vote on 103 policies, because that's how many policies that we took on to MASC that we did not previously have. I just wanna be sure that everybody understands that. That's 103 policies we did not have. We didn't have a Grafton version, and we took on an MASC version. These are policies we never held. Such as, the one that we read tonight with the securities cameras in schools. We never had that policy. So this is a new policy. It's not an MASC version of a policy that we previously held. These are brand-new policies. 103 policies. I need to keep stating that. There's 103.
Well, that's why we're not doing it tonight.
But, I don't think that, we can't just say, "Go read the policies." Do you know the 103 policies that are missing? I mean, there's a lot. This is a lot, lot of work. And I don't think that we can blindly take them on. And if, if the committee feels comfortable that they're gonna read what is actually over 300 policies to encompass that 103 policies, that's what you're talking about doing.
Would you like to see us break it up in a different way?
I had provided an audit to Dr. Cummings and to the school committee to show out all the, all of the policies back in April. And just as we haven't finished doing the policies that were missing, we still have 63 of those policies yet to go through. I think we can't just blindly say, "Let's do it." This is not a good method. I highly disagree with this.
Any other discussion?
I worry that we're not getting to substantive policy work, because we're very worried about the logistics of policies that are already in practice and on our website and in our, in our manual, that seem to be working.
But we're not actually keeping these, like, we're, we're not actually adhering to these policies, such as, even though those AB, those A policies, we took on the MASC version tonight, we'd held some of those. We were not presenting those in our handbooks. I mean, this is kind of a big deal. Policy is a huge deal for the school committee. We make the policies, we maintain the policies. Just as it was, felt like it was blindly accepted back in February, this is, this is not a good idea.
So, Madam Chair. I think, I think we have different philosophies on, on policy, and that's been a struggle. My thought, when Leora made this recommendation tonight, it was thinking about it as we do a town, a town meeting. We do a consent budget, and people can hold on. And we understood, when we, when we discussed this, and, and Christie, I respect that you think this is a terrible idea. That, but going through these, and I'm still confused on even what you've said. And the audit that you presented never really made it to us, because it wasn't...
It did. I emailed it directly to you. You all received the audit.
All right, we're not gonna do this. You're gonna wait to be recognized by the chair.
Okay, so we have it, or not. I'm still confused. It's just not the way I communicate, and I, I respect everything you're saying. I'm just saying, as I receive information, when this happens, like, I feel attacked and criticized. So that's not on me, and I understand that. But it's not effective on how we're working. Like, we're not affecting as a group. Hold on. Please let me finish. So, I understand what Leora's saying, and it is a lot. You've done all the work, so you should expect us to do that same work. And if two weeks isn't enough time, then we can have... I mean, I'm still confused on how it would be presented, Leora, like I wanna talk about. Because it's a lot of work to get these books together. And you guys see that sometimes they're not perfect.
Yep.
But I think some of the policies, we can accept, and it's not a blind accept, we're reading them. And if we have ones that are like, "Hey, these are funky," we'll say, "Hold, Madam Chair," and we'll pull them out, or we need a deeper look on them. But some of them, I think we could move forward, and we can put it to bed that we have now officially moved over to MASC, But some of them, I think we could move forward, and we can put it to bed that we have now officially moved over to MAS-C, which is what our goal was two years ago. And now we've been backtracking for months, because this policy we didn't officially vote on, and it's going to, that's why we moved over to MAS-C, because we had hundreds of policies. So, if you have a better suggestion on how to maybe streamline this, I'm totally open to it. I just would like us to, I'm almost done, I promise, just to kind of move forward without this anonymity, I guess, or however we can do this at the good of the district. The handbooks are separate. They're not under our, the, the, well, they are, but the handbooks are separate. So these are in practice. AB is in practice. We're cleaning it up.
Madam Chair, I have asked the superintendent, in fact, I sent an email a couple of weeks ago. I'd like to meet with a member of the, the, the policy committee and with Dr. Cummings. I really need the policy subcommittee to understand, since it's clear, as you've even stated, that you don't understand what it is that I'm saying. I'd like to meet in a meeting, Dr. Cummings, what do you say?
No, Madam Chair, before.
All right.
So my concern on that, Madam Chair, is that it's not, it's, I can't have one of us on there and then one of us not, because then we have, so it's has to be done in public session. So we need a policy workshop, and we're all here, and we just dive in and do it, and we just work together, because I'm open to that, but just having one of us, then we still have to communicate to the other. If I go, I'm, I just, or we each have the meeting, I don't know. I'm open to it, Christie. Like, I want to hear your thoughts, and I want to get this done correctly. I just don't know how to do it with the, in confines of open meeting law, which isn't fair.
Madam Chair, this is kind of why I want.
Can I have five seconds, please? Okay? Five seconds. This was just an idea that was proposed. It is clear that we have a member of the committee that is not in favor of it. We need some time to process, okay? I'm not opposed to the idea of a workshop. I agree, it needs to be done in open session. This is not something we can do in Dr. Cummings' office with two people. So, that said, we have full agendas coming up. This is not something we're going to be able to do on our regular agenda. So I'm asking the committee to go home and look at your calendars. I will send out an email, and we will find a day and a time that everybody can come, and we will have a policy workshop. And even see if Ms. Novick can come and help us out, if that's appropriate. All right? I want, and I, and I really want everybody to leave their emotions at home. This is, this is not, this is not campaign season anymore. It's over.
I agree, Madam Chair.
Uh-uh.
Excuse me.
Excuse me, you were not recognized. It's the third time now. Trying to keep this meeting running in order, and I understand that emotions are running high, but everybody just needs to be quiet for a minute. That is my plan. Are there objections to my plan? Seeing none. This discussion is over. Do you have something else constructive to say?
I believe everything I was saying was constructive, Madam Chair. In addition to that, I would like to give a presentation of policy.
Are there any objections to that idea? Seeing none. That is what we will do. We will do a.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
May I ask, Christie, what the substance of the presentation will be?
You sure will.
The substance will be of my audit to explain it, since it's clear that it's not understood.
Can you keep it to fifteen minutes? And I only ask because I think we're going to need time to discuss. If you, fifteen is too short, then what do you think? Fifteen is fine? You can go a little over if you need to. Twenty would be fine. I'd like to keep it under two hours if we can, as a whole. If we need another one, we'll schedule another one. Okay. I will send an email out for dates. So please look for that. All right.
Thank you for considering.
Not a problem. All right.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
I also have some other questions in regards. Oh, hold on. Policy, back on July thirtieth, we read policy CHCB. We spoke of this policy. I had said that it, me or something else. Madam Chair, you said that you thought that it was its own policy, and we took it as a first reading. We've never brought this policy back for a second reading. I'd like that to be brought back. In addition, at the last meeting on August twentieth, we spoke of policy BGF encoding issues. I'm not sure what ended up happening with that policy. I don't see it in the new, in the MAS-C manual. Has it been recoded? What is the status of that?
I thought, Madam Chair, I thought we had a big discussion about that.
Yeah, but it's not in the manual.
Last time. It, it was, I thought it was approved last time. Let me check.
I was going to say, maybe it just hasn't been updated.
These are the.
It's all right.
You know, and I.
These, these things do take time to get updated, too.
I also think emotions make us who we are as people, so I don't appreciate being told to keep my, as long as we're kind and respectful, which I believe I am, I'm certainly not campaigning, so I just need to say that for the record. I, I don't. Um, telling people to take away their emotions takes away who I am.
I agree with Mrs. Doughton.
Doubt it. Anything else? Member reports. Anybody have any member reports tonight?
Yes.
Yep. Who said yes? Was that you? Okay, go ahead.
Uh, my member report. I went to the open doors days at MS, MSES, that was my eighth year in a row. G, GHS and GMS, uh, the new GMS open door day, that's lovely. I have to say that that's great. I know before, it used to be, you kind of had to make an appointment, do a tour. Now they have an open door day. I gave a tour, which my kids did not like, and they will hate if I mention it, but the tour was called Back When I Went to High School Here. Highlights from it included the smoking section of the high school, which no longer exists. So, there was that, there was book fair today. Uh, it's all week, it's going on all week.
At Millbury Street.
At Millbury Street. That's been great. I attended the MAS-C online workshop on public comment on Friday. They touched on things such as how people introduce themselves at meetings, and I think perhaps we should think about what they said. They said that, um, people shouldn't really include their address for privacy purposes, but instead, say a way in which they're affiliated with the school or town.
I thought they had to.
They, well, so, and then it's a weird thing, because I then asked, because in one of their policies that we actually have, BEDH.
Yeah.
It states that. Right? So I said that to them in the meeting, and they said, yeah, but we think. Okay, so, I, I, I don't know.
Sign in with the chair, maybe.
So they, they do say do a sign-in, but they said that a, a lot of, there's been complaints that there's privacy reasons, you know, you don't want a fourth grader, Susie Q, giving her address at, or, you know, you could just say.
For minors, that does make sense.
I'm a student at Grafton School System. I'm a parent of, or a guardian of a student, like, really, your address is not necessary.
Yeah, I think the only reason it, it exists for public comment in general is to make sure that you're actually resident and not, you know. And we have had people show up, like, for
that aren't residents.
Less than great reasons from other communities to talk, and it's like, well, that's great, but we don't have to let you talk, because you don't, you don't live here.
But you also might get a resident of a student that's here, that, they have a student in the district.
Sure, yes.
So, how do you know?
Well, that's true.
They said affiliation, kind of.
Yeah.
Actually, this policy.
And they have, we have done that. We have had them say, I've, you know, I, I live in this town, but I have a student here, and we've usually accepted that.
The policy actually says that they should state their name and city slash town. It does not say street address.
I like that.
I think that's.
That's good to know.
Actually fine.
Don't, don't look for, for other committees to do it that way, though. They won't. Do you have something, Laura?
I was.
I heard you open your mouth.
Yeah, I was going to say, we were veering off topic. That should be an agenda item if we want to talk about it.
Yep, anything else?
That was all.
Anybody else? Yeah, go ahead.
I volunteered at the book fair at Millbury Street yesterday, and it was phenomenal.
Oh, goodie.
I almost bought a lot of books, and then I didn't, because.
That's how they get you.
Deep breaths.
Anybody else? No? All right. There's no correspondence that I'm aware of?
No.
We do not need a second session. All right, that, all that being said, I hereby declare this meeting adjourned. Good night, everybody.